Yeah, we left before they came on. Oh, sure, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, all right, so we'll open this meeting. Okay, we're here for the June twenty-six, two thousand twelve special meeting with the West Sacramento Planning Commission. I'd like to ask Commissioner Olson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
As a reminder, anyone wishing to address the commission should fill out a request to address form and present it to the clerk. Presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission. David, do we have any correspondence or staff communications for the commission?
Yes, Chairman, I have a few matters to note. In front of you this evening, you should have a large binder, which is the applicant's PowerPoint tonight. He'll be going through that in his presentation. They were kind enough to provide that, so you have that at your desk as well. Also would like to note that our city council, in their most recent meeting last week, did adopt amendments to our we're in the middle of our two-year budget cycle, so they approved those as our new fiscal year begins July first next week. And also would like to thank the commissioners for agreeing to have the special meeting tonight, especially on short notice. I wanted to acknowledge that upfront, that this is a special meeting this evening, and appreciate nearly having almost entirely full commission. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman, go on.
Thank you. Do we have any disclosure of ex parte communication by the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I've actually talked to a couple of neighbors in the area.
Okay. With that, David, I believe we have a presentation by the applicant.
Yes, Jim Bermudez has been our project planner on tonight, and he is away at his other duties this evening, so I'll present the project on behalf of the city staff. Tonight, we are here for the Planning Commission to consider design review of the project before you. Project is known as Tower Bridge Commons and would have three hundred and fifty multifamily units and additional commercial space within a portion of the project. Site is generally bound by Fifth Street on the west, G Street on the north, Third Street on the east, and the Tower Bridge Gateway and West Capitol Remnant on the south side of the property. These sites are largely open lots right now that have been used for parking for Rayleigh Field for a number of years. Project was conceived in two phases. We generally refer to those as the courtyard buildings, which would be the buildings that are located on those current, you know, parking lot sites, and then also a separate building called, we would call the Tower Bridge Gateway Building. That would be at the, along the Tower Bridge Gateway front edge of the property and front right at the Tower Bridge Gateway, also the Tower Bridge Gateway elevation. We're here to consider design review for the Planning Commission tonight. This is a little unusual. There's a provision in the Rayleigh's Landing Development Agreement that was approved back in two thousand six that it also requires city council approval of design review after a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So we are seeking your recommendation tonight, and we do have the design review right now scheduled to be heard before the Planning Commission on July eleventh. Excuse me, city council. So we are moving rather quickly on this project and we're trying to work, you know, with the developer and developer's desired schedule. Review of some of the, many of the details on the site plan is, you know, still ongoing. However, at this point in time, you know, we believe that the substance and essence of the project is ready for the Planning Commission's, you know, consideration, even though review of some of the details is, remains ongoing between staff and with the development team. So this, so at this point in time, we would like to answer any questions you may have of staff on the project or our process tonight. And then we also have the developer and his architect here have a presentation for you that will go into much more of the details of their architectural scheme and vision for the site. So if there are any questions of myself or Director Hamilton, or we have also Mark Collier with the engineering group here as well. Be happy to answer those now.
Start with Commissioner Chase, do you have any questions at this? Sharon, okay, I think we're ready for the presentation.
Members of the Planning Commission, thank you for accommodating this project with a special meeting. I wanted to also acknowledge your service to community. I spend my career, oh, excuse me. That does, thank you, Sharon.
Sorry about that.
No worries. I wanted to offer a sincere thanks. I spend my career working with staffs of cities all over the western U.S. and working with planning commissions and city councils, and I just wanted to acknowledge, I'm a member of, I live in Folsom, and I wanted to acknowledge your service, that great communities are built by, largely by volunteer service. And as this is a special hearing that you've accommodated, I wanted to offer my gratitude for that. My name's Dan Nethercot. I represent the Wolf Company. I'm a longtime resident in the Sacramento area. My family started across the river about a hundred and fifty years ago in a boxing and swordsmanship school started by my great-grandfather, so was associated for many years with the groupie company and have worked on several projects within the city of West Sacramento. The Wolf Company is a family-owned company. We've been friends for decades, and we came to the city about a year ago with a proposal to develop some property with the spirit of partnership, essentially. And we started out by saying, we know that there's been adversarial relationships between developers and cities in the past. That's not our M.O. If we can start from there, then we're interested. We believe the new economy requires cooperation and community building, and that's how we begin. And I just wanted to let you know that staff has been terrific as we've moved through the process. Not that we agree on everything, but it is a true partnership. And one of the unique elements of this project is that it became clear that there was some city-owned property adjacent that would be mutual benefit to both the city and the project if we could figure out a way to incorporate that that old road land into the project, and it was challenging. And so we now have an application before you that proposes a project in two phases and accommodates the technical requirements that are still unsolved and represent risk to both of us as the developer and the city. And so what we're, what we've agreed on is an application that allows for the first phase to move forward independent of the second phase, which we both want to build, but we recognize that there are some significant issues that need to be resolved that are not entirely in the city's control. So that application has been crafted with great care and with partnership. There are a few technical issues, such as fire and other things that need to be resolved, that we are working through. But we're pleased to be here. We're trying to be, drive courteously within the city, and we're trying to be the kind of property developer and owner that helps to advance the cause of West Sacramento and also makes a very significant investment in the, in the city. So with that, I'll turn the time over to David Mogavero, who's the architect, unless you have any questions specifically for me at this time. No? Okay. David?
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Mogavero. I am an architect based in midtown Sacramento for longer than I like to think about, thirty years plus, actually. And we've been, we've had the honor of working on this project with the Wolf Company, a wonderful group of people that are very, very focused on adding to the value of the communities that they build on, and they've been extremely supportive of taking a progressive, thoughtful approach to this project. And so we're here to talk about that this evening. A little bit more background on us. We've done a lot of things in Sacramento. We also worked through most of northern California and down in southern California a little bit, but we've, we've built in, or designed more accurately in West Sacramento, the master plan for the C Street and Third Street area that we just kind of began master planning. They used our plans for Metro. We developed, we designed Metro Square for them in midtown Sacramento, and then they use those plans over here as well. We also were the architects for the project that John Leonard built, the three-story single-family with the mixed-use building on the corner as well. And we have a project under construction at Seventh and Eighth Streets in downtown Sacramento right now that's an eight-story facility for homeless, homeless people primarily. So we have a strong commitment to sustainability. That's why I started my practice. We've been leaders in that nationally since we started, and we're very proud of that. So I'd like to start off, now, let me just make sure, okay, I have a pointer here. When I use this pointer, do you see it on your screen as well? Oh, you do? You don't. So the pointer only shows up up here on the master screen, right? You see it?
We see it when you're moving it, but then after you stop, it'll disappear after a while, both up there as well as on their screens.
So I'm gonna have to kind of keep it shaking like this then, okay? All right, very good. Now it's stable, it seems to be sitting there now. So, let's see, that is forward. So let's just start off with context, just to make sure that we're clear about the site. Of course, this is the pyramid structure that the state of California owns, and the Calsters building up here to the north, the ballpark, and that thing doesn't quite always respond. So the ballpark, and then your wonderful new infrastructure improvements along Tower Bridge Gateway. You are to be complimented. I just nominated West Sacramento for an award by the Environmental Council of Sacramento because I think it's the best expenditure of public infrastructure in the region by far. You did a great job with it. And so we're really proud to be working on your new main street as well. And so the site is, well, I think I just, this isn't gonna work very well, so I'm just gonna jump to the next slide. It's not happy, is it? There we go, okay. So you're gonna be able to help me out over there if I need it, David, or not? Because this, this thing doesn't seem to be working. So that gives you a sense of the scope of the site. We have to the north, along G Street, a few residential structures that are exceptions to the property. I brought this, but I'm not sure if any of you can, can you see this, Ms. Perez and Mr. Olson? Can you see my laser pointer up there? Okay, well then, let's try to use this then. So the portion of the property that remains in ownership by the city is the extension of West Capitol Avenue right in through here. And we have designed a structure to be constructed on that property as well. And so we have an exception to the parcel that is these residences that are along G Street there, and we're backing up to those structures. I think an important thing is that Tower Bridge Gateway has a big scale. It's very broad. This? Well, if the pointer's not working, however. Okay, well, we'll try to do this through words instead of, instead of visuals. So Tower Bridge Gateway is a big, big place. It's got the ballpark on the other side, and we have the potential of a Marriott's that's gonna be a high-rise building adjacent to it. And then as you move further down, you've got the railroad bridge, so it's, it's got a lot of large scale to it. The other aspect of this site is that to the north of us, the Washington neighborhood, is very small-scale. It's very intimate, smaller buildings and things like that. And we view that as an important distinction between the two. The other factor is that we have an eleven-foot grade change from Fifth Street to Third Street. The street basically rises, and we have to accommodate that differential and at the same time maintain a good, strong urban presence on the street with stoops and all of the things that are important for the quality of your street environment as well. And then, of course, we have the River Walk that's adjacent, a wonderful recreational amenity. And very importantly, we have no street parking to work with, which is a challenge. We want retail here, the city wants retail here. We've in many, we work a lot in retrofitting suburban locations. While this is not exactly a suburban location, it's also not an urban location. And thus, parking in front of retailers is really, really important for them to survive. We don't want any blank retail spaces along West Sacramento streets. So we've designed this project with the following goals in mind. One is a very high-quality and strong statement about West Sacramento. This is your gateway, this is the access to the city. You know, there's something like twenty, thirty thousand cars a day that move through this, and it's your primary, primary road other than Highway fifty, which maybe doesn't count as far as being very personable. We want a very personable pedestrian scale environment. That's critical. The city has identified that, and we want to connect to the adjacent neighborhood. We don't want to just turn our back to it. And these are all things that West Sacramento desires, we understand as well. I've talked about the different scales within the community, tried to relate to the north to the more intimate scale, bolder, more aggressive responding to the power of Tower Bridge Gateway on the south. And very importantly for the success of the projects is that we want to attract a younger, midtown kind of demographic. So the amenity package is gonna be tuned to the millennium generation. You know, the question we've been asking ourselves is how do we get people here to say to their buddies that live in midtown, "Come on and hang out in West Sacramento tonight, on Friday night"? That's a primary objective of ours, and thus, we're responding with lifestyle and lifestyle ambience and things of that sort. So, overview, we have in, in between both phases, there is three hundred and fifty dwelling units between the two. That's about forty-two, forty-four dwelling units per acre. And there are two different components. That's not what I wanted to do. Oh, I see, there's a little arrow down there that I, okay, but I can't go backwards with that arrow. There we go, all right, okay, now we're getting, I got the hang of it now, thank you. Okay, all right. So we have a combination of, you can see sort of this green space textured neighborhood, and those are all three-story structures. There's basically a drive, a pedestrian court with everybody having a front porch on those courtyards, and then there's an alley behind them. These courtyards are very similar to the courtyards that are fairly common in midtown Sacramento. There's one across the street to the north of McKinley Park that's pretty popular, and it's, that's kind of the ambience that we're looking for in these, in these courtyards. They all open to the street at the end so that there's this hierarchy of community. You've got the larger community, a gateway into a smaller community, and then as you get in, the community gets even smaller still. And the, and then on this, along Tower Bridge Gateway, we have a leasing office, which is a little bit hard to tell from this plan, and I can't point to it. So you sure I can't use this, huh? All right. I'm sorry, I'm used to doing things visually instead of verbally. But you can see there's an axis that moves through the site, that there's a path on the east side of Fourth Street, and it actually moves through the middle of the building that is going to be along Tower Bridge Gateway with a grand breezeway, two-story breezeway that connects one side of the building to the other to maintain a pedestrian connection to Fourth Street from Tower Bridge Gateway. And that's where our leasing office is going to be, on the main street along there. We're gonna have a little pullout there as well. And then the, the, and then the retail is going to be at the western end of the site, at the intersection of Third and Tower Bridge Gateway. And then because we have zero parking potential down on Third Street, we're basically doing live work there. So we, we did a little project at Tenth and T Streets in midtown Sacramento where we put a little live-work unit on the corner, and it was very successful. We got a little Photoshop on the downstairs, and it's just enough to animate, animate that corner. We know we can't make bigger retail work there because of the parking limitations without putting a parking out in front, which nobody would be happy with. So, let's see. Let's, so I'm gonna focus in on, this is a blow-up of a view into the courtyards. And by the way, these graphics are still kind of crude. We haven't done a lot of very sophisticated renderings yet with people in them and refined the buildings a lot. But you can see what the feeling is gonna be down into those courtyards. There's gonna be a front porch and upper porches at the corner of the buildings, basically function as guards, if you will, into the courtyards in definition, beginning of a new territory. Every single unit through the courtyard has a porch or a ground floor patio. Every single unit has a door off of the courtyard, directly off the courtyard. Some of them share, some of them in the middle, some of the buildings have four entryways, or I'm sorry, one entryway for four buildings. And then at each end of these courtyards, we're gonna have little gathering places. Some of them may have barbecues, some of them maybe just be simple gazebos with seats and things like that because we want a place that defines those smaller neighborhoods. We, our strategy is typically to define a neighborhood of about twenty or twenty-five families, and then fifty or sixty, and then ultimately the larger scale. So we've got icons, if you will, or places that help define all of those little, little neighborhoods, all the way up to the larger neighborhood. So you can see that in plan a little bit here, and then also in elevation. Pardon me? Yes, thank you. So I'm gonna move out to Tower Bridge Gateway now because I'm trying to give you a sense of the texture at the perimeter. This is what the basic frontage of Tower Bridge Gateway is going to look like. Every single ground floor unit, although they're gonna be elevated, at one end, they'll be elevated more relative to the street than at the other end. We'll have sort of a Back Bay, Boston, Mr. Chase, or a Baltimore, or, you know, downtown, east side, New York kind of feel to the stoops. Quite frankly, those, those brick things are a little bit too wide. We're gonna narrow them up there. We feel they're a little bit too bulky. But there will be a front stoop for all of those units, each individual one, with a canopy overshadowing it. And then the living rooms will be on, overlooking the street, elevated just enough to have a sense of dominance and territorial definition for the street as well. And then on top of those projecting living rooms that are the darker volumes there is the balcony for the second floor dwelling unit. And then if you look to the right-hand side of that image, there's a void, and that is the outdoor patios that are actually the size of a room, a little bit bigger than a typical bedroom, for the penthouses. And on the top floors, we have penthouses that are gonna be two-story units, have a master suite up on the upper level. And those balconies, we're expecting people to watch the baseball games from them. And let's see what we have for the next one here. Yeah, okay, good. So this is coming back a little bit along Tower Bridge Gateway, and you can see that connection back into the common area. That's, there's actually a little meeting room that we're gonna make available to the community, whether it be a business group or residents within the project, or some little neighborhood association in the neighborhood where they can hold meetings anytime that they want. Reserve it from, from the, from the community. And also, on the top, we have a community balcony that will be an opportunity for there to be parties for the folks that live here to overlook the baseball game as well. We're gonna have a little gas cookout stove up there and, and the like, and restrooms as well so that there can be gatherings up on that top level. We want to engage that street as much as we can and humanize it as much as possible. And you can see the penthouses popping up on top. We've made them fairly neutral. And down at the eastern end of the site, you can see the, the live workspaces. I think the next slide shows that, no, that's, well, that's with, with trees. And, oh, what's this? Oh, I just found another little, I see, I have a whole library of icons over here, except it won't move. Pardon me? Oh, you're moving it. Okay, can I go backwards for a minute? Thank you. All right, so, so that's with, you know, So, so that's with, you know, probably three or four, five-year-old trees. And then the next slide, if you would again, is without the trees in front of it, so you can see what's going on. And let's see what the next slide is, if you don't mind. So, that's an evening slide, you know, eliminating that street, having a lot of presence, a lot of activity and the like on it. And again, down at the eastern end, at the right-hand side of your image, is the live workspaces. Next slide, please. And then this is looking at it from that end with the live work. And because the building's still going to be elevated relative to the street a little bit, we're going to have to, we're going to have a little bit of a ramp up to the level with the live workspaces, so that we can have handicap access to those, and they can truly function as commercial spaces, because the handicap requirements are different. If you'll notice, we have, you know, shading devices on all the south-facing windows, that's true for the west-facing windows, which there's a whole bunch less of, because we're very focused on energy efficiency, we're doing things like central hot water, setting it up for solar in the future, setting up all the electrical systems for future photovoltaics, although, we haven't closed the door on potentially doing it as part of the initial phase of the project. So, if we could go to the next slide, please? And then, this is looking at the backside, if you could go to the next slide again, I'd appreciate it. Okay, that's the whole street elevation. Let's see what the next slide is, please. Okay, that's the back, let's go back to, please. Thank you. So, in this slide, you can see the breezeway that connects through to Fourth Street. There's a hole in the building, the third, the fourth floor goes through, there's a two-story void in the structure, and that's sort of our grand entry from Fourth Street back into the community. It connects to another sort of grand stairway that takes you down into the common facilities, and this is the common area on the south side of the building, with a rooftop sunning deck up on top, and a gym that's on the second floor, and the ground floor is a combination of a lounge, a lounge and a sort of open space area that's going to be a flex space as well. So, what we've got as common areas in the project is meeting rooms for the broader community, this breezeway connection, the rooftop terraces, two of them, on the south and the north area. In the common building, we're, we're looking at setting up an outdoor screen, so that we can do movies at night on, on the community green. A business center will be in it, and then some flexible space. We're also looking at, and actually, this doesn't show the landscape at all in it yet, but we're looking at putting a basketball hoop in a half-court basketball area in it. We've got a place where we're elevating a music stage and putting in enough amperage for people to do music in the evening, or on Saturday afternoon and the like. We have a big park, and if you could actually go back several slides, I'd appreciate it, to the site plan, the big green site plan.
And the bike kitchen.
Bike kitchen. One more, please. There we go. Okay, so that's the overall site plan. You can kind of see how the community, the breezeway cuts through, and then that white sort of trapezoidal shaped space is the primary community space. On the second floor of that is a gym, is the, is the exercise facility. You can see the pool, and then all of that environment relates to a small park. It's going to be very simple, we want it to be flexible, we want kids to be able to play there, you know, people to play volleyball, or throw a frisbee, and the like. It's not a big park, but it's enough for people to actually do some things, and get the dogs out, run around a little bit, and things of that sort. We're also looking at a place for people to wash their dogs, a place where, a bike kitchen, we're, every single unit will have a place to store a bicycle in the entire project, and, as well as having places for visitors to park their bikes also. And then multiple gathering areas. Every single one of those courtyards will have two mini little gathering spots. Some of them will be very minimal, just a couple of benches and a little shelter, you know, sunshade structure over the top, and others will be a little more sophisticated with a gas, gas barbecue, or a coal barbecue of some sort or another. And then, we're going to have also a place where, where CSA can provide produce to the residents, a community, community, what?
Supported.
Thank you. Community-supported agriculture. There's a lot of farms in Yolo County that actually provide boxes on a weekly basis to families in our region, so we want to provide that opportunity as well. So, that's kind of what we're doing overall with, with the project. I've talked about the Tower Bridge frontage, and the gateway, and the breezeway views, and the penthouse, and all of that. So, if you could maybe move towards the end, let's see what other slides I haven't touched on as of yet. Okay, night view, and then that's from the west, the backside, and that maybe, and then this is sort of an overview of the, the Tower Bridge Gate, Tower Bridge Gateway frontage. You can see the retail, the continuous windows over on the western end of the site. It's actually a two-story volume with a mezzanine in it as well, so that it could work as a, you know, a pizza parlor, a big pie pizza parlor, or we can break it into multiple, multiple tenants as well. And you can see the gateway statement, the white element in the middle of the building. And if you'll notice, relative to the three-story buildings, this is, this has got a lot of texture to it, with the sunshades and the trellises and the volumes popping in and out, but it's still kind of handled relatively monolithically, so that we can have that power to deal with the street frontage as well. So, with that said, there are four issues that I'd like to talk about, to address tonight. As Dan pointed out, you have a wonderful staff. We have not been as pleased working with the staff in, like West Sacramento, virtually anywhere we work, and we probably have projects in twenty cities right now around the state. And nonetheless, despite all of that, we have four things that we're still kind of pushing back and forth on, and I want to share those with you tonight, and ask for your feedback on them, so that we can re-enter the dialogue on those issues with, with the staff. All of those issues boil down, in my opinion, to a choice. And the choice is between the sort of twenty years ago West Sacramento, and its sort of suburban character with grade-separated interchanges and all of that sort of thing, or the direction that the city of West Sacramento has been advancing itself towards very, very aggressively, with the improvements that you've done, with the plans that you've put into place, the design guidelines, all of the things that you aspire to. So, one of them, if you don't mind, go all the way back to that big site plan again, thank you. One of them revolves around, very importantly, parking on the street. We had gone in assuming that we'd be able to put parking along Fifth Street, because we have no parking on Tower Bridge Gateway. We have that big retail space on the corner, we want it to succeed. We don't want it to be a boarded-up retail space. And we have shown parking along Fifth Street, we prefer it to be diagonal parking, we think it's really important that it is, that West Capitol Avenue comes straight into it, and thus, I understand that the transportation folks for the city are concerned about a potential risk there, but it's a condition that exists all over the country where there's urban situations. It's very, very common. You drive around midtown, and there's diagonal parking all over the place, and that's just, that's just Sacramento. We have instances all over the western United States of that kind of condition. So, that's one where we're having some differences with staff, that we'd really like to do street parking there, we think it's essential to the survival of the retail. The other is Third Street. Third Street, as best as I can tell, is designed for fifteen to twenty thousand cars a day. It looks to me that, other than a baseball game where you might get, you know, a thousand cars in an hour, virtually twenty-four, seven, there's, on a typical day, there is probably something like three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, a thousand cars a day. And so, you've got four lanes there, and I think there's a suicide lane there as well. And what we're proposing is that on an interim basis, we take the curb lane, and we stripe it to put parallel parking in it, so that we can, and what that does, I like street parking a lot, because what it does is takes, takes visitors and puts them on the street, moves them into the units, and then vice versa, which means we're increasing the activity level, the surveillance on the street, the safety, the engagement of neighbors with neighbors, and things like that. Plus, we've downscaled the number, this is an interesting balance. We're not midtown Sacramento, where there's very little, much less demand for parking. The norm in midtown Sacramento is about one, one parking space per dwelling unit, or thereabouts. We're actually parking this at about 1.3 parking spaces per dwelling unit. A typical suburban project of this sort would be 1.7 to 2. So, our client, the Wolf Company, is extending themselves to provide that more urban character for West Sacramento, but we'd like to mitigate that risk by providing some additional parking on an interim basis. So, we'd really like to see that curb lane for Third Street be striped for parking for four years, five years, three years, whatever, whatever it takes, so that we can be certain that we're going to be able to, you know, address the parking needs of the residents and the visitors for the community. And then the third thing is that we, because we want to market off of Tower Bridge Gateway, we have to, we don't have any choice in the long term, because that's where all the traffic is. Nobody's going to know where this, the leasing office is buried back in the neighborhood. We're asking for a pullout on the street, I think that staff has agreed to a two- or three-car pullout, and we're looking for a four- or five-car pullout along, along the street there, so that people can park there, go in, do a half-hour leasing experience, and then come back out. So, it'd be a short-term parking space. And last, and hardly least-
I didn't understand where that last one was.
Well, since I don't have a resource to point, I'm going to break the rules, just for one second. It's basically about in there.
Okay.
Probably about seventy feet right in there, right at that, at that gateway.
What do you want to do there?
We'd like to do a little pullout.
What's that mean?
Well, that means that basically, we'd add, we'd, we'd take the curb, and we'd pull it back about eight feet, or seven feet, whatever the standard is for parallel parking in West Sacramento, and we'd allow cars to park there on a short-term basis. Yeah, it would look like a bus pullout, basically, right? And then, last but not least, we have these long alleys, and, under normal circumstances, the fire department would interpret fire access to those by a standard that says the fire truck can pull in a hundred and fifty feet, and as long as they can get a hundred and fifty-foot hose pull to all, at, the entire perimeter of the building, that that meets the, the fire code. There's a new provision in the, in the, the fire code that speaks to, one side of the building has to be accessible by snorkeler equipment, the snorkel equipment, if the building is in excess of thirty feet. We are actually about twenty-nine feet to the plate line, which is the ceiling of the top floor. Because of the way the building code interprets building height, we have to do half of the height of the slope, which puts us two feet over that. And, and then, but even more explicitly, that section of the code says one entire side of the building. We've been consulting with Vernon Brown, who is a state, a state, state-recognized expert in fire codes. He was a fire chief himself, and has been consulting to the state fire marshal for twenty years. And Vernon agrees with us on this, and the code says that one entire side of the building has to be accessible. We, in fact, every building has at least two sides. They happen to be short sides instead of long sides, but the code very clearly doesn't state one versus the other, whether it has to be a long side or a short side of the building. And then finally, the, there's a provision in the fire code that also says that if the fire chief in the local community, it explicitly says, if they elect to extend the hundred and fifty-foot pullback space for the fire truck, they can do that if the building is fire-sprinkled, this entire project is fire-sprinkled everywhere. So, we think it's more than a gray area, we look at it one way, your fire chief is looking at it another way. The problem is this, if we, we had designed this project with all of those alleys, to have a structure, or some kind of gazebo form, closing those alleys, so they are not evident from the street. It's all about the quality of your streetscape. What are you going to see? You're going to look back in the alleys, or are you going to be looking into, into these, into a, a structure that hides that alley component? So, we would really like to not have to, right now, the fire chief is saying we have to, we have to let the driveway extend on both sides all the way through. And we would like to be able to keep it closed the way that we have it. So, those are the four areas where I'm asking for some perspective from each of you to provide to us and staff, and we will be getting back with staff in the next few days about them. So, that's the end of my presentation, I hope I didn't take too long, but I, it's a big project, I wanted to make sure I covered it thoroughly.
Before we take public comment, I want to see if there's any questions by the commissioners at this point, and I'll get to start with my right to Commissioner Chase. David, are there any requests to speak, please?
Adam Clerk, did we have any requests to speak on this item?
Okay, we'll leave it open. Bring it back again to the commission for questions. Start with Commissioner Chase.
Um, there's a question, and this probably is directed toward David. What is, I know it's really, actually, the other David, but that's okay. What is the design review status of this? I mean, as David Mopar said, you know, preliminary, conceptual, some of the drawings, a lot of, a lot of detail to be worked out. Will that be coming up to us, back to us, will that be worked out with staff, David?
No, the design review that's under consideration is what you have for you tonight. We would not anticipate returning to the planning commission. Yeah, yeah, unless the city council does, directs us to bring it back, the city council would make, per the terms of development grant, make the final decision on design review. So, as, there are some, you know, more technical details we still need to sort out, and, you know, the project is still in, you know, very, fairly, you know, early, early phase of design in terms of the level of detail in that design, those are things we will continue to work on, up, up to and including through the building permit, plan check, you know, process. But what you, what your designs that you have been presented tonight is what we are seeking your action on, and, and more specifically, this evening.
I'll tell you, to Dan and Dave both, I'm so glad to see someone like you come to our town, I think it's terrific. You know, we look forward to having some project down in that area, and I think it's exciting that you want to come to West Sacramento. Unfortunately, I read this whole thing, and I have a couple of questions, and I don't know if my questions will go to our David, or you folks. The first thing I'm not real sure of, are these homes going to be built three or four floors high, so each unit, where you show the entryway goes up three floors, or are they lateral-type units?
Well, there would be flats, and then also, I think, as Mr. Mopar indicated during, on the Tower Bridge Gateway elevations, there'll be the two-level penthouse units that would be on the third and fourth, fourth levels.
At, Mr. Moore, we have, we have the penthouses on the, the upper floors of the Tower Bridge Gateway building, but we also have townhouse units on the second and third floors at the Third and Fifth Street ends of all the buildings. We've taken our more luxurious, bigger, more special units and put them on the street elevations, so we, because it gives us a little bit more flexibility as far as architectural design to animate the buildings more.
So, those floors will be, or those units will be two floors high then?
That's right. There'll be townhouses on the second and third floor of the buildings.
Okay, the first floor being the garage?
The first floor will be the garage off the alley, and then apartments, the ground floor units on the courtyard, and actually, they wrap around the ends of the building so that we have habitable space. Actually, we've put the kitchens, a lot of kitchens, back overlooking the alley right at the corner, because it's a high window, very defensible, and we can get good surveillance out of the kitchens to that part of the neighborhood.
You know, as our other planning commissioner, Senator Murray Wright, said, you know, he would have probably shown us what you were going to build there, because there's nothing here that shows me anything about what you're trying to build inside the units.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I'm asking these questions.
Sure, sure.
So, then, my next question would be, will any of these units be handicap accessible?
Oh, yes.
I mean, they all look like they have big stairways to go up.
Yeah. I'm, uh, let me see, we have ground, how many modules do we have? We have twenty-seven, about, about fifty- Uh, we have, um, twenty-seven, about, about fifty modules, and each of those modules have at least one handicap accessible unit, and half of them have two. Um, and then the entire, so we've got about seventy ground floor units that are all handicap accessible, and then the entire-
But they'll just be a single unit, I mean, a single floor for that handicap unit?
Their single floor, that's right.
Okay.
And so, and then the entire Tower Bridge Gateway building is designed to be handicap accessible. Every bathroom, every kitchen, every hallway, all of the common facilities are all handicap accessible.
So, Tilly, this will actually be your question, because I know that you'd love to answer this one. So if we're able to sell West Capitol Avenue to this group, is this a city-owned piece of property or a redevelopment piece of property?
The exact, yeah, city-owned. Um, that's, this part mostly, it's, um, a lot of that is also the remnant right-of-way that was acquired when two seventy-five was relinquished to the city.
Right.
So that's, that's city property.
Okay. So that, if we sell it, then those funds go back to our general fund?
I, yeah, I believe that would be the case.
Okay, well, I didn't know if it was redevelopment, then I really didn't know what would happen if it was redevelopment.
Well, then it would go back to taxing entities, redistributed to taxing entities. But yeah, whatever terms come out of this, if there are proceeds, it would go to the general fund.
You know, my, my biggest concern of this project is that if you don't acquire that property, or you decide that you don't want to acquire that property, which is what it says on page five, we just won't build the pool, the community center, that we won't build any of the homes on that area, which will also get rid of some of, will that get rid of some of the commercial also?
That is a great question. So the application actually accommodates both circumstances. So if the, uh, the Capitol Avenue property is unavailable, if there's a serious impediment, then we will, uh, we have an alternative to build the clubhouse in approximately the same location as an independent building. And both of those scenarios are part of the application for, for approval.
I didn't read that in here.
Uh, that, that's the-
I didn't read that. I'm just telling you, I didn't, it just says either, we can buy it or we don't buy it, or we decide we don't want to buy it, is what it says on page five.
Maybe we could pull the picture-
You wouldn't have to build that then.
No, we, well, first of all, we would absolutely build a clubhouse and amenity facility, absolutely, regardless of which program. So if you can see where the pool and the clubhouse is that's connected to the Capitol Building, in the event that we cannot acquire the, the, the street property, then that clubhouse appendage would move away twenty-five feet from where it's located. The pool would be built in approximately the same location, and the clubhouse facility will be built, and that's on the record. So we have a, uh, there, there is in the submittal package a scenario where that clubhouse is independent from the, from the Capitol Avenue four-story building.
Hey, Tilly made me read this whole thing. Did I miss that in this?
Yeah, the, you know, the, the project that, you know, with the courtyard buildings, you know, certainly could be done, you know, in, you know, independently of the Tower Bridge Gateway, you know, properties. So it may take, you know, some adjustments, you know, in the site plan you have in front of you to accommodate some of these, you know, community spaces, but that, that project could be accommodated, you know, phase one, you know, solely without phase two.
But it didn't say that in here, did it? I didn't read it, that's what I'm-
On page five.
Yeah.
At the top, it talks about that. And what appears, that didn't get into the staff report, and I'm not able to find it, is the attachment, the site plan layout that shows an only-phase-one condition. Is it attachment six? So if you go to attachment six, there should be a site plan that shows a phase-one-only condition. Because there are some hurdles to get over with regard to the West Capitol Avenue.
Well, and I understand that, Charlene, but I was just trying to make sure that we all, I mean, it just shows it out, on attachment six, it shows it as being in phase two. Correct?
Correct.
So nowhere did I read that we're going to build it no matter what? In what I read. I'm just bringing that up.
So-
It's okay.
The top of page five, the last sentence or two of that paragraph, "If the property issues cannot be resolved with utility agencies, or if the developer decides not to move forward with the purchase, then the design review approval for phase-one site would remain and development would occur only on the Rayleigh's teal property."
Okay, so that would include that then? Okay.
Yes.
That's fine, I just didn't understand that.
With, with some minor modifications to push it out of that, the city-owned property.
Sure, we'd have a couple of those. The staffing's tough, too. They're not that easy. I was just making sure that we all agree. You know, and the other part that I was not seeing in any of this, and it's usually in a development agreement or in a development proposal, it's talking about the London Plains, I guess the trees along the old two seventy-five, and that they were going to come out of the project. But I didn't see anything about the oak trees that we currently have on the property and stuff, and whether they're going to remain in the project. Because usually, we have to talk about trees that are going to be removed, and I didn't see anything about those.
I'm not aware of any oak trees.
They're right along Fourth Street. There's like four or five of them, isn't there?
Uh, there are some trees there, yes, and we have an arborist report, and the, the, you know, the massing and the density goals of this project will require the removal of those trees, and we'll be replanting.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, that's just, normally, we don't allow oak trees to be removed, and that's why I was asking that question.
Correct. I thought you were referring to the Tower Bridge Gateway frontage. I wasn't aware of any oak trees on Tower Bridge Gateway frontage. But yes, it appears there are some on Fourth Street.
Yeah.
And, and so far, those hadn't been identified for removal on the design review. But it would be something that would be, uh, processed at the time of the grading permit.
Okay, this is because I'm really dumb in this. So we got two-hundred-and-forty-two courtyard units. Are those for sale, or are they all going to be apartments or rentals?
These are all, these are all market-rate rental apartments that will not, we do not anticipate, uh, turning these into condominiums and selling them. Our business model is, is, uh, the rental business, and we think that that business, by the way, is changing in the new economy, and this project is designed to be an apartment building for the long term.
Okay. Uh, you asked, you answered my question about the commercial, because we can split it up or have one big unit depending on who we find for that.
I, I do have a comment on that commercial. We believe in incorporating commercial into these projects, and it's tough. Uh, there is vacant commercial in, in these types of projects all over the country, and typically, the reason is that people can't get to it. Uh, you have a unique situation here with Rayleigh Field across the street, and you have a unique corner where Capitol Avenue continues, kind of a little jog and then goes on, and you've, what David was talking about, I believe is a critical component to a successful retail project there. In fact, I'd go as far to say that it's binary, that you create a little bit of a traffic imposition, and that's what the traffic folks don't like, or you have a successful corner that people stop, and, and our objective there is to get a quality retailer that adds to that community that is both for the people that live in the area and also is vibrant when there's a ballgame. And you need to create a little, I mean, I hate to use the term, but it's going to be somewhat inconvenient to have that parking, it's going, parking there, it's going to slow people down. And it, it's binary. You can have retail on that corner, or you can have no, with parking, or you can have no parking, and the retail will fail. We just won't get anybody in there.
My next question is just kind of a technicality here. Do you have diagonal parking on G Street?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Did you move that on to your property, and that's how we're getting the diagonal parking?
I believe we did, is that correct?
Yeah. That's what it looks like, I'm just making sure that, so it's on your property?
It is, and, and-
Not entirely, Dan, if I, if I may.
Sure.
We basically took the street side of the parallel parking that already exists there and worked backwards from there, and, and put diagonal parking in, we added a separation between the sidewalk and the parking, and so we actually are giving up dedicating, I don't know, probably ten, twelve, fifteen feet of our property, but some of it is actually in the existing right-of-way as well.
Hey. You didn't think I read this much, did you? So my next question, and we had an applicant that had this property before, and they were going to put something there, and we talked about how they were going to make it so each of the units were kind of definitive on looking like they were separate, and they weren't just one long stretch of property. Are we going to have any kind of a design to this project where maybe part of it'll be brick and maybe stone on another one, and wood on another, and stucco on another? Because everything I'm seeing here, whenever you build one of these units, it's all the same color. It's all identical. So we'll have blue and green and yellow and whatever, but the whole unit is one color. There's nothing-
Well, the exact colors haven't been selected, and that's, that's part of the, um, staff, working with staff to, to solidify that. The, uh, the, the materials will be fairly uniform throughout the three-story project, and moderating different types of materials isn't necessarily good design. So I, I think just from the care that you've seen and our, our process so far, we're very concerned about the way the project looks. This is a, this is a dense project. We're, we're meeting really the minimum density goals for this piece of property.
I, I don't deny that at all. I was just saying, though, that the other project, the guys had a project down on like fifteenth, sixteenth, and E and F. What were they called, Charlene? What was the name of that project?
It was Signature Properties.
Signature Properties, you may, you probably know who they are.
Sure.
And they had the design where every front where you were entering looked a little different. Now, I mean, it could have been brick and wood and stone, and it'd do the same thing on the next property or the next part of it, but they were a little different on there. And I, I would just, from my standpoint, looking at it, I was, it just looks like if you paint the whole thing blue and that's it, it's just not as attractive.
Well, we're not going to paint the whole thing blue and-
Well, I'm just looking at your paint pictures, so you asked my opinion, so I was just telling you that if we're in design review, which we're not part of, that would be my suggestion to our staff, that we look at something there.
I think that's an appropriate comment. We, we, we're confident that we are going to be able to satisfy staff in the design, specific color and design review process. Also, the materials and the, in the way the decks and the stairways and the windows, there, there are, uh, there is a diversity in the materials that are being used and how they're, uh, how they're applied in the specific buildings, I think, is part of the, the, the design review process with staff, so.
So the good news is I only have one more question, so that's okay. On the part of the project that faces out to two seventy-five, what, are we going to have, you know, we kind of talked about how it was going to face the baseball park and people could look over there. What's it going to look like?
Do you mean the-
I mean, are we just going to see windows and just exactly what we see now?
That you're talking about the three-story buildings if we never built the, the four-story building?
Well, we're, we're in hopes that that's the four-story building that's going to face the baseball park.
Correct. And you're saying, what if it never gets built?
No. I have to take us back a couple of years when Mr. Tilly and Mr. Rickla and Rebecca took our whole planning commission on a tour of different developments in Elk Grove and Sacramento and the Thomas. And one of the things that we were talking about is whatever faces out to a main artery like that has got to have something special on the outer exterior of it, so all you don't see is just a window.
Okay.
And, you know, where you drive up and you see a home, a bunch of homes, and all you see are the little bathroom windows facing out, and they were talking about putting shutters on them, canopies over windows, something to make it a little more attractive. Kind of even, to take it so far, is when we built over at IKEA and Walmart and stuff, and we had the railroad tracks behind them, they had to actually paint and design those buildings so that they looked good even from the railroad trains going by.
So I, I think the picture, the elevation of the, I don't know if you can pull up the, um, elevation of the four-story building?
Well, I think, all I was talking about, and remember, we don't do design review, they yell at me if we do design review, but that was part of what our planning commission voted, that we were always going to make sure that there were special elements to the facing those, those areas, including two seventy-five, including the railroad tracks.
So, stop right, yes, go back one. We have spent a significant amount of time figuring out that exact same thing. You know, we're, we're an owner here, and these are, we're not selling them, these aren't, we're not going to build this thing and run away. We're going to own this thing for a long time, and, uh, we're very concerned about what you're just saying. What is our street image? How, how do people perceive us as they drive by? So much, although there are windows and we don't have shutters, what we have are overhangs that create shadow. So we're, uh, we are solving that issue with color and shadow and decks, and have, it's been, there's been a lot of thought that's gone into that. So we're confident.
I don't deny that, I'm just saying that that was part of what we talked about in the past, and I, I would hope that, you know, we take a second look at that element of the project when it, it's there.
I think staff-
Now, I'm glad you asked me this question, because I've been waiting, I had four more notes on parking.
Okay.
I have a great idea for you to resolve your parking issue.
I'm ready.
You take away one unit down one side of the street, move your project over a little bit, that would probably give you enough room that you could move the diagonal parking onto your project and not have to worry about it. Well, um, you asked for a comment, that, now that, that would resolve your issue completely. Rather than taking away one of the traffic lanes that we thought we had to have to begin with, if you took away a unit down one side of your project, that would probably be wide enough that you could have diagonal parking on Fifth Street and Third Street and not have to worry about it. And then your question that you asked about a hundred and fifty feet of an alley, that issue, which has come up to our commission a number of times, included projects out on Marshall Road, and those folks all had to do the same thing and provide some sort of another access way for the fire department to get in there. And it doesn't necessarily mean that you can't have trees and block it off a little bit, but it's going to have to be a wide enough space that they can get around it and still get down that alleyway. And that's been our policy for probably ten years now, and I don't know how you vary from that particular policy.
I think what we're asking for on all those issues is that, rather than trying to resolve them tonight, is that we are bringing them up and saying, with, we're in agreement with, on this project, we're trying to figure out the fine points, we've got some, some technical issues to resolve, and we'd like to allow that to be resolved in the, in the, with staff, in the, in the various departments, in the, um, in the building plan, plan check, design review process, and be able to present evidence and have the appropriate bodies make, determine the, the answer.
Well, which is probably the fire chief and not me as a planning commissioner, you know, but, but I mean, that, that policy, it affected three or four projects out on Marshall Road, and they had to build acts- Road, and they had to build access bridges, over drainage canals, and all kinds of stuff. I mean, we just never have shied away from the safety of those projects, and I don't, I would be very surprised if the chief would vary that, that item today. But anyway, I thought that I could resolve your whole parking issue, if you lost about three or four of your homes, and that would just move it over a little bit, and that would give you all your parking that you needed.
Onto the parking comment, Mr. Moore. One, we've done exactly what you're suggesting on, on Fifth Street. That's exactly what we've done, that's exactly what we're doing on G Street. We are giving up property so that we can provide, you know, diagonal parking on the street, and in the case of Fifth Street, we're getting some pushback from city staff on that. So we've done exactly what you're suggesting there. On Third Street, that's all brand-new infrastructure that you just spent, I'm gonna guess, at least half a million dollars constructing, if not close to a million, and we are loathe to completely demo everything that you've put into place, and we-
I would be disappointed in that myself.
Yeah, so, that's the reason for the nature of our request on Third Street, and why it's different from what we are doing, exactly as you suggested on Fifth and, and G.
Yeah, I mean, I was just, you know, I've, I've looked at this project, and that's exactly what I came up with, is my one solution, that makes everybody happy except, except Dan, you know, who goes, I could lose three units over here. But I mean, I don't know what else you do, if you're really gonna satisfy the needs, because at some point, you know, they're gonna say, hey, you're only gonna do diagonal parking, and you're not gonna park on Third Street, because Third Street was completely designed with a traffic study, that that's what we had to have at complete build-out.
You know, when-
And your other little comment, about your little thing in front of your leasing office, I personally don't care. That's my comment on that, I don't care how that one would go.
And, and just one last comment on the Third Street parking. Our, our suggestion is that it stays the way it is, it's, and, and there's a temporary use of the extra lane for parking, that creates efficiency, as the demographic and the parking needs deteriorate over time, and people use other forms of transportation. So, we'll, we, we are anxious to engage in that debate with staff, and, and figure out the right answer. I think what is probably most important for me to convey to the commission is that through, there have been a hundred of these issues that we've worked through with staff, and we've had differences of opinion, and we've gone out, and we've figured out how to, how to resolve them. We really see ourselves as your partner. We wanna get to the truth. We wanna get to the best project, so that twenty years from now, people look back and go, wow, those, those folks did it right, that turned out great. And we are earnestly pursuing that objective.
I agree, I think you are too.
Thank you.
We always end up with one disagreement. I mean, it's pretty hard to go through a project this massive, and not have some disagreement.
I agree.
So, I mean, I, I think you folks have done a tremendous job here. I just was making my comments of what I saw, and what I was hoping to see a little bit more of.
Thank you.
And hopefully, some of that can be, well, I'm sure David remembers a lot of what I said, and he'll talk to you about some of it when that time comes.
Okay, I'm sure he will.
Commissioner Galvin, I think we'd like to put a little more input about regarding some of the parking matters that, you know, have been discussed tonight. Director Hamilton has some notion on that as well.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to provide a little bit of background from staff's perspective. We have been working with the developer on this, and we have worked through many issues. If we thought that there were too many outstanding still, we wouldn't be here before you tonight. So, this is not uncommon at this stage. You know, this likely, this was prepared to go to council, actually. So even, we were gonna bring it to council, even with a few of these items outstanding. It's not uncommon for some parking, and some fire, and building code issues, to still kinda remain as conditions on a design review, and that we finish resolving those through the building permit process. What we're trying to achieve here is at least enough of a concept to approve, that then we can, that, but not have any major outstanding items that might change that concept, to the point that we cannot make a substantial compliance finding by the time it comes around for building permit. So, with that, you know, the, the items that are somewhat outstanding at this point, that still need further refinement, are some of the perimeter parking, and fire access, as well as the whole Tower Bridge Gateway property, the, the city-owned property, which has quite a few constraints that would have to be overcome to develop, such as, you know, the existing water line that, that's in the street, the PG&E gas facilities that are in the street, the existing London plane trees. So there's a few items there that need to be worked through, and that's why we worked with them to phase the application, such that we could maneuver either direction, depending on how we, how, how, how those constraints are dealt with. So with that, I'd like to have Mark Collier come up, and talk about kinda where we're at with the parking, and some of the fire access, since the fire chief was not able to be here.
Good evening. I think we're all glad to be here, at Planning Commission, talking about a development project in town. And we're trying to wrap our engineering minds around some of these creative issues, and to accommodate this project, as to find, we're all excited about it. But, we want to draw the line where we feel there's a potential health and safety issue. So, just going down the list of issues that the applicant has brought up, Fifth Street parking, the proposed parking, whether it be diagonal or parallel, between TBG and West Capitol Avenue, is unacceptable to us. That is a very complex intersection, it's two intersections, but it operates as one. And adding diagonal parking backing into it, or parallel parking, which, as you know, requires multiple-point maneuvering at times, if you can't pull directly in, you gotta stop and back into it, we feel that creates a significant health and safety issue. Parallel parking, further into the north, we're, we're considering. Again, Fifth Street is a very busy street, one of the busiest streets in town when we have development. It's gonna be the most complete north-south arterial between the absolute north end of West SAC to the most southerly part, so. The Third Street interim parking, you know, Third Street was built out to its ultimate condition, it's probably wider than it needs to be right now for existing traffic conditions. We haven't considered an interim solution, if it is possible, and we'd be happy to, to look at existing traffic volumes, and whether one lane of traffic would, would suffice in the interim. I don't know how we'd identify a trigger mechanism in the future, or how that would be funded, to convert it back to four lanes, but, you know, that's something that we can, we can explore.
Say, excuse me, did you say you were considering parallel north of?
North of West Cap and Fifth Street.
So where would the closest on-street parking be to that, as proposed to that retail space?
It would be north of where West Capitol Avenue comes into Fifth Street, north of that intersection. Okay. The pullout on TBG, again, TBG is another very busy road, and basically what we're proposing here is, is parallel parking, and, and the, the types of maneuvering that's required to pull into that. The site plan is, it currently shows, I think it shows two or three slots, the idea of putting in five is new tonight, but we are taking a look at it, considering it. Not entirely comfortable with it at this point, to tell you the truth. The dead-end lengths internally, a hundred and fifty feet is in the fire code, it's also in the city design standards. It has a lot to do with the maximum distance that the fire trucks can back out. There's more than one way to accommodate, you can put in a turnaround, you know, the current site plan doesn't accommodate that, obviously. Or you can put in a, an emergency access out the, the other end, as, as we're proposing, and that would be gated. The surfacing would, could be something attractive, you know, pavers, even turf stone, you know, something to make it look a little nicer, and not have quite the visual impact on, on Third Street and Fifth Street. But, again, that's a health and safety issue that we're not comfortable veering away from. Any questions?
Mark, maybe one. You are looking at them having a spot for the leasing office then? Be it two or three spots, or ten? But, but we're looking at it, because I mean, that kinda makes sense to me, that we'd have something there for someone to-
You know, immediately adjacent to it, we have a bus turnout, and this is gonna be a bus turnout, but a bus pulls in one way, and it goes out one way. This would be multiple cars, you know, if you have five slots, and the middle one is vacant, and the other four are occupied, someone's gonna stop in that outer lane of traffic, on this busy roadway, and have to back in. So there's gonna be a conflict there, and it's-
Yeah, but I mean, that's something that makes a lot of common sense.
Sure.
You have to have something there. Even if it's one or two, at least have something there for them. Okay.
Commissioner Sidney?
I too am excited about the, the project being here, I don't have a question, actually, for you, directly for you. I, I, I do have a process question, I guess, for Charlene and David, and perhaps counsel, legal counsel. So if we, if we follow this recommendation, we're basically moving this, this discussion we're having along to a city council, in essence? Or, I'm, I'm trying to figure out-
That's correct, yeah.
'Cause I know, I know how much we've spent on the whole, this whole area and part of town, and I am really sensitive to the access issues, and beyond this project, movement around the, the, the various streets that we've designed, essentially, and that there's more projects coming. So, I, I feel that I am supportive of moving forward with this recommendation, knowing that there'll still be dialogue between the developer and staff, and it sounds like that's going pretty well, so I, I just am wondering if, if we move along with the recommended action, then we're basically moving it forward to council for this, to finalize the discussion.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I'm just trying, just trying to understand what, what's ahead of us.
Just to clarify, David, that discussion will be the ongoing resolution of these three or four issues that have been brought forth tonight.
Well, and we would, we would certainly hope to achieve some resolution, you know, on those, you know, with the, with the development team, hopefully before the council meeting, you know, if, if possible, but certainly, if, if not, you know, we will, you know, continue forth, at least having some discussion at the council level, about, you know, some of these matters, and, you know, particularly, you know, as they affect, you know, the, the design, I mean, that's really where, you know, what we're trying to, you know, make sure we capture, you know, the good, you know, example, you know, is the, you know, we've talked about the hundred and fifty feet and the dead-end lengths, how that's accommodated, you know, has a, definitely has an influence on design, as to whether or not, if those do end up going through, then what type of treatment do we have at the end, as it, you know, faces, you know, the street? You know, whether that's, you know, gate, what, as Mark said, what type of, you know, surface treatments would be applied? So those, even though some of these matters are, you know, seem somewhat, you know, technical in nature, you know, they do have some influence, you know, on the design, so we are trying to accommodate those issues from the technical side, but also keeping in mind of how they may have, may influence, you know, the project design, anything around the perimeter of the project, you know, towards the public edges is of particular importance to us from a design, you know, design standpoint.
Just to be clear, on the, on the recommendation portion of this, we're saying that it gets to move on to council, with the understanding that there's gonna be compliance with the fire department, and that the, um, street parking will not be modified?
Yeah, that, that is the substance of our recommendation this evening.
Commissioner Olson, do you have any, any more questions?
Uh, no, that's it.
For us?
Um, I don't have any questions, they were asked and answered. But I would like to say I'm excited about the project, it looks, looks really nice, and it kind of anchors the other end of the, near the Black Bridge, you know, you have the residential areas in the middle, and then this project looks similar to the, to the housing project off the I Street, the I Street Bridge, the Black Bridge. So, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions and comments. I won't go into much detail, but I do echo Commissioner Moore's comments regarding, you know, the face of that building, front of that building, and, and sort of breaking it up in some way, so I want to encourage continued dialogue, that, that's a long stretch of, as he said, something that looks very similar in nature, going along the whole stretch. So, David, if we move this forward, could we do it with the recommendation to continue the dialogue about design elements and breaking that up?
Well, certainly if there are any specific recommendations regarding the project, the planning commission has that we could include as part of the recommendation to council, you know, we could supplement what we have already, you know, if, if the council, I mean, the planning commission does have, you know, specific suggestions or recommendations. We've, have done that in other, other circumstances, and so if there are things we could, we will note them this evening, and include that as part, and you would ultimately include that as part of your motion this evening, and then we will probably would develop an attachment that goes along with the resolution that we have before you tonight, that includes those, any specific items the commission may have from its, from its own review of the project, that we could take forth to council.
Sheriff, could I make a comment?
Certainly.
David, I find that to be very difficult to do, because they just got done telling us a couple minutes ago, that what we're seeing here isn't really what they're gonna do. They are, they have all kinds of plans about colors, and different things that they're gonna do, but they haven't put any of that before us, so we don't have any idea what they're gonna do.
I think what we typically do in this situation in the past, is you provide comments on what is before you.
Which I did.
Even though they may have already been thinking about how they're going to incorporate that in the future, what we usually do is have you just reiterate your concerns on, on the presentation you saw tonight. And then that's what goes to council, and maybe by that time, some of that's already been incorporated, and we report that.
Commissioner Chase?
Here, just a question here, were we just going through a question phase, or are we gonna be able to offer comments, or was that a combined thing? 'Cause if so, I'd like to go back, I have comments.
Well, we have a comment after we close.
When I close the bubble carrying, I'll probably bring it back for comment deliberation. So, my second comment would be on the, on the turnaround, and I do agree, and I was glad to hear the commentary tonight, as well as, I think, you know, our experts have spoken, our fire department's spoken, and I think, I'm not really flexible on, on changing the recommendation, I do agree with the recommendation on that. As far as the, the parking in front of the retail piece, I mean, I, I see the, I see the applicant's position on that, I, I, not only, I think, I think it's gonna primarily service, you know, the folks in the neighborhood, the folks in that, in that actual, in the actual complex, and maybe the walk-up traffic from Rayleigh Field when it's, when we have events there, but I do see their position, as far as having some parking as close as possible to the front, but I was glad to hear the concerns that you raised tonight, so I would continue staff to, to work with the applicant in, in trying to resolve that somehow. If that means just past West Cap, as, as you're suggesting, I would be in support of that. And the last issue is that I, I do agree that turnout in the front, I don't, I don't see any issues with that, I think that's a good idea, I think that's probably appropriate for folks who do wanna pop in and look at it, look at a facility, or look at a, look at a, one of the complexes. And I'm still, on the, on the Third Street piece, if you could, if you could comment on that again, Mike, what are the issues with, with that piece? With using that, that, that lane?
Well, the, the issues would be providing sufficient roadway for the traffic volumes that are, that are present for now and in the future. And, you know, when we, when we built the road, we built it to accommodate traffic in, in the build-out condition, and as you know, we're nowhere near that right now.
Right.
So, it's not unreasonable to, to take a look at some sort of an interim condition, if we could find, if we could do traffic counts, and, and demonstrate that one northbound lane would be adequate to accommodate- lane would be adequate to accommodate the traffic that we have flowing through there now and in the foreseeable future anyway. I mean, we don't want to do a one-year, probably.
Is there current on-street parking?
No.
So, I, I, again, I would support encouraging staff to, to consider a temporary adjustment to that. Those are the comments that I have. Do you have any more comments from the commission? Any more questions?
Questions or comments?
Yes, please do have a public hearing.
So at this point, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation, and I'll start with Commissioner Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, a, a few comments on it. First of all, I certainly want to echo, I think, what you've heard from the other commissioners, that to see a project like this come forward is tremendously exciting, and we certainly hope it will be able to move forward. It's a great location, closer to downtown Sacramento than most of Sacramento is to downtown Sacramento, so it's always been one of our strengths here. Just a few comments, I think, and I guess these are going to be directed primarily to David, hopefully to take into consideration as the project does move forward, since it is fairly conceptual. You know, architects are just always chomping at the bit. I want to see more detail. I want to see what's going on in there. My initial thought was to consider breaking up the massing and the articulation a bit more. The more I think about it, I actually think the massing on the south side of the building on Gateway is probably, massing-wise, okay. I know you work with color and everything as you go forward. Interestingly enough, I think I'd like to ask for more attention on articulating the north side of that building, because that, in fact, is the transition between the courtyard housing, and, and it's, in fact, more monolithic, I think, than the street side. So I would, I would, I hope that that can be articulated and, and broken up. I, I totally agree with David Mogaviris' comments. The stoop massing, I think, is oversized and should be, you know, scaled accordingly to the buildings. I, I was not at all clear how the penthouse units were going to be sitting on top, are they interlocking, is there a center corridor upstairs, are there elevator access, are they, you know, walk-ups to this? So, again, I think that will, I will rely on designer view to work with that, but it was difficult for me to understand what's, what was happening there. And, and again, without seeing the unit development, but that will work its way out. Regarding the on-street parking, I, since I actually go to meetings at the Ziggurat many times a week, at this point in time, I certainly don't see an issue with the temporary scenario coming out on the north side of Third Street. And, and I think we need to keep in mind, let's be optimistic, hopefully we are going to have a trolley coming through here at one, one time, that I think will, from what we've seen in other cities, Portland, et cetera, will really, you know, be successful and carry a lot of vehi, a lot of pedestrian people, cut down on the number of cars. But it would seem like on a temporary basis that, I, I would hope that that temporary situation for parking there, parallel parking could work. Regarding the Fifth Street parking, having done retail architecture for many, many years, I understand the applicant's request. However, I, I can see just the, the issues. So, if I'm understanding correctly, Mark, you're saying if we come in approximately 60 feet or so, or perhaps to that first driveway into the parking lot from the corner, that may be sufficient, and then we could have parallel angle parking from that point northward?
Yeah, basically, if you look at the site plan they've provided, they have multiple pockets of parking. And so, the, the parking pocket located north of the first driveway in, across from West Capitol Avenue would be where we'd start to consider that.
Thanks. I, I, I think I would favor that. I, you know, I know retail parking, I always want to get it right in front of the units, but I think as we become more urbanized, that's not going to be happening as much, and people are going to be used to walking more. So I would, I would support that scenario on the parking there. Regardless, I also would encourage the, as did my fellow commissioner here, and several of them, the ability to get some leasing office parking pullout there. I understand there may be challenges, but I think that is a very important thing. It's fairly common, I think, on a temporary standpoint for leasing, so if that can be done, I'd like to see it. Regardless of the, the fire issues that were mentioned, I think it's been brought, brought up. I mean, having been a building official, and since still being a building official on a state level, those are beyond our purview. Those are going to be, have to work out with the fire department, the fire marshal in the city. I suspect that, you know, through access, however it's treated, will be the likely alternative on both ends there. But again, I think that's, that's not something a planning commission is going to resolve or can really even make strong suggestions on. So, I know that will be worked out as we go through the, through the process here. The height issue, again, that, the interpretation of the height, that is going to be entirely up to really fire marshal, you know, even, even our building official can't override that, so there has to be consensus between, between the two. And, and then the only other, the final comment is if this project does go to a, you know, Phase One only, and the, the, the additional property is not available. I know, I think there was a clause in there that Charlene mentioned, that the site plan would be readdressed if that is the case, because what we'd have then, I think the, the easterly side of the project probably would be easy to deal with. The westerly side of the project, in other words, south of those units there, we are suddenly then faced with, as the plan sits right now, a parking lot on the street, which I think we all know is not the most desirable thing. So, I would like to have that particular issue addressed if it ends up being, you know, Phase One only. So, on that, you know, I certainly am very much in favor of moving this project forward to council for further review, so.
Yeah, I think my comments, which I've already made, you know, deal with just the looks of it a little bit, the, the architectural design or the painting of the structure, that concerns me. I've already talked about the parking issues. My major concern is the fact that if we don't get Phase Two, what we're going to do? And it just, you know, and I don't quite understand what we're going to do. It could end up just being, like Commissioner Chase said, it could just be a parking lot there. But if you don't have Phase Two, and they opt out of Phase Two, then you don't have, you may not have enough parking in the whole area, because a lot of parking went on to Phase Two. So, I don't know how you advance Phase One if you don't have Phase Two without relooking at the whole project. I, it just seems to me that we could have some problems there, so I, you know, my comments, of course, were the architectural part, that I have no idea what I'm talking about, but I know it looks cute when you do different things. And then, secondarily, I don't understand how you allow just Phase One to go forward if you don't have Phase Two. That's my comment.
Commissioner Olson?
The microphone is... Parking thing is a, is a pretty big concern here for me, just knowing that Third Street and Fifth Street, that's kind of like your last north and south corridor through town, and I use that all the time. And I would hate to see that lane reduction on either one of those streets. It just, and it, you know, that's how it kind of goes. I mean, that's what we've gotten narrowed down to, and I don't think we want to give away any more for parking there. And then, plus the fire concern. I think that's been echoed enough there. But yeah, I, I mean, with those two things, if those were mitigated in this plan, I would move forward with it.
Okay. So, David, if, as a matter of process, if we, if we move this project forward, do you, do you have a list of all the concerns that we've gone through, or do you want to go through them?
Yeah, we've, Charlene and I have taken, and the attorney have taken pretty copious notes on the comments that we've heard this evening. So we'll be, continue to work, work on those with the developer and through the city council portion of the project.
It doesn't sound like, as we've gone through this, obviously, we're going to resolve those issues here tonight. It sounds like all we can really do is either move or not move this, move this forward with recommendations to continue to dialogue regarding those issues, or not move forward? Is kind of where we're at.
Yes, yeah, and we would, we would strongly urge you to adopt the recommendation and move the project forward to the city council, with the recommendations that are in the report.
And I know you said you've taken copious notes. Some of the things I have, just to comment on it, were the continued dialogue regarding the design elements and the breakup that Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Chase commented on, and myself. Continuing to work towards a temporary parking solution on Third Street, turnaround in the front for the leasing office to allow for some, some movement in and out. The parking north of West Cap issue, and continued dialogue regarding, although it doesn't sound like there's going to be much, much movement on the fire access in the back. So with that...
I did have one more, and that is, maybe not all of you have commented on this, but at least some of you, about needing more clarity on how Phase One only would work without Phase Two. And I think, I think that can be provided, and that would likely be something that council may ask as well.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Moore. So with that, I'll bring it...
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against say nay? We move forward? Okay, passes. I want to inform the public that project will be scheduled for a public hearing before the city council on July 11th, 2012. Is that still the correct date, David?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Approved resolution, total 3PC? Thank you. Do we have any informal discussion with the council?
We have counseled our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would have otherwise been July 5th.
Okay.
Good move.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that. Adjourn.